Okay, terrific. Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the public communication section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings. We'll start the meeting with introductions to my left.
My name's Eric Casino. I live in the Lacey UGA and I serve the commission at large.
Barry Halverson, Yale, Washington, District Two.
Daniel Baum Barker, District One, I live in Olympia.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Devin Pestinger, District Five.
Joel Hanson, serving District Three, and we have a couple of commissioners online tonight, two, possibly three of them. We'll start with Commissioner Kaiser online.
Good evening, I'm Sandy Kaiser. I live in and represent District Three.
And Commissioner Fishburne is online as well?
Yes, good evening, Bill Fishburne. I live in and serve District Four.
Hey, and I anticipate Commissioner Bartlett will be joining us online shortly. With that, we have an agenda in front of us and I would take a motion to approve it.
Move to approve the agenda for October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second. It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you, we have an agenda.
Seven fifty-two P M. No one changed it.
Yeah.
Next, uh, next we have, um, meeting minutes from October first meeting.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and use the audio recording as official record of that stuff.
Second.
It's been in second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Pestinger.
On page three, line seven, it says Commissioner Pestinger suggested if the process is simplified, penalties for non-compliance should increase. Well, I totally agree with that. I don't think I said exactly that. And I think it was a group of us, at least three of us, that said things like, there should be enforcement and penalties should meet, match. The, uh, what's the word, the, the non-compliance? Um, I would recommend to change that penalties should be in line with the non-compliance.
Do you want to have objections to that edit? So strike for non-compliance should increase and replace with, should be in line with non-compliance?
Yep.
Okay. Did you catch that? Okay, perfect. Um, is there any further discussion? And, uh, vote on the meeting minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, terrific. We have that out of the way. Next, we have public communication. Um. You've all heard this before, right? In script. Phyllis?
Every time is like the first time.
All very much.
All right. Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Phyllis Farrell. I am speaking for the South Sound Sierra Club group tonight. I live in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood in unincorporated Thurston County. Uh, in preparation for consideration of your work in updating the critical area ordinance provision, I urge you to prioritize wildlife corridor connectivity. Uh, wildlife corridors are essential for the movement and survival of various species in critical areas. They connect fragmented habitats, allowing animals to migrate safely and maintain their ecological roles. These corridors are vital for species that rely on seasonal migrations for food, breeding, and survival. They concur at habitat fragmentation, maintain genetic diversity, and support adaptation to climate change. Without these connections, many of our local ESA species would face increased risk of extinction as their population becomes smaller and more isolated. Please keep in mind possible strategies could include conserving habitats that facilitate wildlife movement and mitigating features that impede wildlife movement. Thank you all for the important work you do.
Thank you, Phyllis. Uh, next, Bonnie Blessing.
Hello, I'm Bonnie Blessing. I live in Alpine Hills in the Baby Creek area. And, um, as you move forward with your CAOs and all that, I was wondering if, well, you have this HCP, and that's nice and it has some good stuff in it, but it costs developers a lot. And it's not really designed to like recover the species. So as you move forward, could you, my big request is to whether you could have like a US Fish guy in here to, to at least let you know what it would take, what it would take to recover the species, where they are, what's gotta happen? And then you can make like a rational decision, you know, kind of like, hey, this, this would recover or we're not going to go down that road, you know? And it's a choice. And even if these species occur in odd places like drainage ditches with next to frequently flooded areas or on an airfield where that, where a lot of species have been protected for a long time, the lark, the gopher, I mean, their populations are doing okay there. We might need a couple other places. But, you know, we landed a guy on the moon. Can't we like try and recover like one of these species or at least know what those are? Since the HCP was signed, I think at least two recovery plans been made, and those are like federal. So this is a state thing, I know, but I don't understand how those intersect really. But you guys are empowered with the tools in the CIO to try to do that, and it's hard. That's why we should do it. Thank you.
Just a note, Colin was having trouble with the link. I sent him mine, but somebody wanted to correct his name. He was about me.
Okay, Commissioner Bartlett has joined us online. Welcome, Colin. And, uh, we will, um, continue with public comment and Betsy North?
Hi, my name is Betsy Norton. I'm here representing the South Sound Bird Alliance. And, uh, we would just like to suggest a couple of other significant topics to add to the schedule in updating the Thurston County Critical Areas Ordinance. Um, the first thing is climate. We recommend that the Planning Commission have a session early on which establishes how you will apply climate change projections to the critical area protections in order to achieve the necessary resilience for people, wildlife, and the environment. Critical areas establish a footprint that should last for the lifespan of a development and beyond. We hope you will consider how these rules need to be crafted to protect county resources, especially groundwater and surface waters, and keeping ecosystem services functioning and continue to support wildlife habitat that withstands the climate challenges through the end of the century, really. Um, the second thing is, uh, goals and results. We urge the Planning Commission also to consider performing a baseline and ongoing regular evaluation of the critical areas' results in terms of the environment so that you can provide hard data to assess the past rules and monitor the effectiveness of the new achieving those goals. For instance, a critical wildlife habitat being conserve, is, is it being conserved or is it being lost? Um, are critical wetlands being lost with concomitant emissions of greenhouse gases, loss of ecosystem function, and associated loss of wildlife populations? If the CIO requirements are failing to meet these goals, why are they failing? And how can the new rules be crafted so they're more effective? And, uh, I have here just a citation for a WDFW Ecological Improvement Framework, which you may not want to adopt, but it has some very good guidelines for what you may want to look at. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, would anybody else in the boardroom like to give a comment? Okay, uh, I see one hand online, Loretta Sepenin. We will make you a panelist. You can unmute yourself and provide comment.
Good, uh, evening, uh, Planning Commission members. Loretta Sepenin live in Olympia, Washington. I too want to comment on the work that you're gonna, uh, continue to work on tonight, the Critical Area Ordinance. I appreciated the demonstration from last time, uh, where we learned about the complexity of, for landowners of working on just a, a simple deck project and, uh, how, how, because it's on a critical area and near another critical area, the complexity of that. Um, I recently heard that Snohomish County, which is a little bit ahead of us on its all these updates, uh, just completed their, uh, critical areas update, and so I looked at it. I don't have the kind of background your other speakers have in science, so I looked at it from a structural point of view, and I saw two ideas in there that are part, that, that they use that I want to, uh, present to you. One is that they start every section, whether it's about the frequently flooded areas or if it's about the wetlands, they all start the same way, process requirements. And they start it by the process that the landowner has to follow. It starts first of all, it says, you can count on the county providing these things, and it's a very short list. And then it says, and then you, in order to get the permit, need to provide these, and that's a longer list. And then it goes immediately into what needs to be provided if you're going to have to do a mitigation. And it says like, for example, that you have a qualified professional to prepare this, uh, whole mitigation plan. And then it notes that maybe you wouldn't be required to do this, and that will be discussed later on in the code. But anyway, it warns you right in the first, everything that you're going to be required of. Then the second one is the same idea as, as, uh, Bonnie, Betsy just described, monitoring. In each section again, um, Snohomish County has a description of the monitoring and analysis to which, in their case, they describe it as achieving known at loss, which is of, of, um, functions and value, which is the minimum required in the critical areas. We could go beyond that minimum. Um, and this is clearly not an enforcement tool. This is clearly data gathering in selected areas within the county to give an aggregate picture of how development is impacting the environment, uh, the various critical areas, so that you can change things. And, uh, we can, um, do that same thing here as well. So as, uh, I think if you could spend some time maybe before, just before your February, um, topic, uh, to consider these generic items that are going to apply to all sections. And, um, I want to let you know too, that everybody who spoke, and I think perhaps all the people who are in the room observing you tonight, were meeting together because we're trying to learn from each other about critical areas, and we will be coming back to you as your, at your future meetings and trying to give input, uh, from the community as you work through the critical area ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Well, we appreciate that. Um, I see one other hand. I think it's Christie White. I see you'll be made a, uh, panelist, and when you see that happen, please unmute yourself and address the Planning Commission.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Christie White and I live in the Delphi Valley. I just wanted to start with ditto to what everybody has already presented, Betsy, Bonnie, Phyllis, Loretta, and the comments that you also received for tonight's meeting on the Critical Areas Ordinance. As I looked at the schedule, um, which is a really busy one between now and next summer to complete this process, I didn't see any public hearings other than at the very end. And I'd like to encourage all of you to contemplate having open houses. I know those are, can be, um, challenging to pull off, but at least something mid-stream for people to comment on, on what you've done and where you're at. Also, the possibility of, you know, we all have our three minutes here, but stakeholders, I know is a touchy subject, but perhaps you could invite, um, individuals to come in and actually do a, a presentation to you of just information about critical areas from the environmental side and someone from the developer side to just sort of share a little bit more. I know that the, the process that you presented at the last meeting of the counter was like, wow, very informative, but perhaps some folks from both sides of the camp, shall we say, come in and just give you a little bit more information of some of the challenges and things they would like to see. Also, could you work with the assessor's office, you know, talking about the carrot and the stick? Yes, I agree, there should be stronger penalties, but what could we do upfront to encourage people with positive incentives to keep as much critical areas on their properties as possible? Or when they go to sale, anything that would help encourage people? Because critical areas is really one of the key elements that makes Thurston County green, like it is, and beautiful and rural. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you. I know this is a lot of hard work for this.
Thank you, Christie. Um, I don't see any additional hands up online. So that'll wrap up public communication. Um, I know we, we don't do this, but does anybody have any thoughts or comments before we move on with the agenda?
Yes, question, question. Uh, I heard a lot of comments about environmental and endangered species and, uh, wildlife corridors. And possibly recovering a species and things like that, and I appreciate those comments and second them. Uh, I would add to that, that not only, and I know Commissioner Bartlett's spoken many times about his care and concern about wildlife corridors, but I just came across a story a few days ago from Utah where, uh, they found that they implemented quite a few, like fifty to a hundred wildlife corridors across the state, and their unexpected learning from them now years gone by is that they've actually had a massive ROI, uh, which they really didn't expect, that they've more than, way, way, way more than paid for themselves in decreased amounts of accidents with automobiles. And, uh, I know our endangered species, you know, pocket gold is probably not going to knock out a semi or anything, but we do have a lot of animals here. We care about all of them, not just the endangered ones. I mean, we got bears. Mountain lions here, we've got deer in large abundance, and I've had a friend run into a deer on the one-on-one freeway, and it didn't go well for anyone, anything involved. And, uh, I just think there's maybe some good research that might justify even more the value of wildlife corridors simply for the decreased, uh, expenses both for property and for lives and trauma, traumatic impacts and whatnot.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, yes, Commissioner Kaiser.
Thank you. Yeah, that very topic was top of mind today for the Washington State Transportation Commission, which, um, at which meeting this morning, a WDFW presented extensively on our state's wildlife corridors and also made the case about, um, the terrible toll that highways take on wildlife and the cleanup associated with that. So over time, I'm sure it's very cost-effective, uh, and not, not even mentioning the incredible benefit to the environment.
I think that those meetings are recorded. Um, and, and so if there was a presentation, that should be available online sometime shortly.
Yeah, it's on TBW.
Yeah, that's okay.
And we did have WDFW and some other folks, um, I forget the organization it was, give us a presentation. I think it was last January on wildlife corridors.
Right, right.
Uh, yeah, they also just had their, um, and I have the materials from it, okay, to me, I think, the Wild Lakes Conference.
That's right.
Um, they, they are coming out with a new mapping tool for wildlife corridors, and it's like this big statewide inventory for it. It's not like a regulatory tool, but it's a resource. Um, and they had a two-day partially virtual conference for that. So we've got those resources as well.
Well, it, uh, strikes me as a topic of interest, and hopefully we'll, we'll learn more about it as we go through this process. Uh, I would just say that to the, um, the comment that was provided in writing by, um, Loretta Sepenin, uh, about the process requirements early in the Snohomish County, um, Critical Areas Ordinance, it made me think of, uh, my nine-year-old son and I like to play card games, and we get a new game, and we unwrap it, and we open it up, and what we always do, we look at the rules. And it lays out usually pretty clearly, like, this is how the game works. Here's how, here's the steps you're gonna take. And it made me think of that, and it seems like a really, really good idea. And if we can learn something from what they've done in Snohomish County, um, maybe to make the whole process that we role-played last meeting a little bit easier on people who have not done it before, and where frankly the stakes are pretty high. People are dealing with their, usually their largest asset. Um, that, that, that is something I would, I would suggest we look into doing. Making it easy for people to understand kind of what they're getting into and how the whole thing works. Yes, Commissioner Pestinger.
I fully second that. I think that was, there were great comments. It's good to learn from Snohomish County. Uh, it sounds like a really good thing to do. And I also just read an article about the new CTO for Wattec, uh, just brought in from Solomon Consulting in Seattle and, uh, asked questions about what their plans are overall in terms of bringing the whole state of Washington forward, um, from a technology basis. And she said the number one thing they're looking at is agencies and how agencies have traditionally developed all their processes based on how they operate as an agency. And they need to totally relook it over again at how the customer experiences it and what their needs are and design it for that. And that they intend to overhaul many of the technical processes in the state in that direction.
She's not wrong. Mr. Bartlett has to say that.
Oh, Commissioner Bartlett, I'm sorry.
You're muted.
You're muted, Colin.
You guys hear me?
Now we can.
Oh, great. Um, no, I, I, everything of import that I wanted to say, other commissioners covered. Uh, I just was interested if we could get access to the Snohomish County links and the link that, uh, uh, Betsy brought up, the information. I'd be really interested in reviewing that.
I think those are in our meeting materials, aren't they? When we get to make the FSW link.
Yeah, it's like, uh, it is a link in.
Yeah.
In the comment. Loretta.
There's a link in the email and I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett. Uh, one last chance, and we're gonna move on. Okay, now we are to, I've written before on our agenda, work session number three on the Critical Areas Ordinance, and I will turn it over to.
So, um, I think in front of you and in the staff memo, you guys got the actual layout of the schedule that, the draft schedule that we're bringing tonight. Uh, this presentation is just to give us room to talk through how that schedule is set up. Um, I'll preface it just to kind of help give context at the beginning. You'll see each of those five critical areas that we've talked about come up in here two times. There's one discussion for, um, the big picture, the science, the state guidance, the big questions, like we have, like, really points of decision to make. Uh, that type of discussion will come up first for each one. Um, and then there'll be a point in time later where the actual code outcomes are coming back for review. Um, and so it'll be this kind of step-in-step, uh, process of talking about each section and then bringing it back, uh, in the future. So for next month in November, uh, we've got the option to finalize the scheduling. If there are like major changes that you want to make after tonight, we'll have time to put that in the schedule and bring it back if needed. Uh, and then the second meeting in November, um, we'll come back to provide kind of a broad overview of state guidance and best available science recommendations. So just to give everybody kind of a preparatory picture of what some of those recommendations and potential changes could look like. Um, again, it won't be super comprehensive. We have time to go into that for each one, but we can show you what types of documents are coming out and generally the types of major points they're making. In December, for the first meeting, uh, we can discuss the guidance, the best available science, uh, for geologic hazard areas. So that is primarily our steep slopes and landslide hazards, but also includes things like, um, liquefaction areas and Lahar hazard areas. Um, and then to go with that, for the second meeting in December, we'd like to invite, um, ideally DNR to come and present their new landslide mapping resources. They have come out with really advanced lighter-based maps that we're pretty excited about, um, that'll help improve the accuracy. So I know like from that, um, the example presentation last time that you guys had, one of the big questions was like, what is the reality of this deep slope on the site? And we have people come in with questions about that kind of thing all the time. This is more accurate, detailed data to the level of detail where we can give people more information upfront when they're coming in for that kind of thing, which is really exciting. Uh, but our code has to reference it and stuff like that. Yeah.
Sorry, what is a PAS?
That's Best Available Science. Yeah, so that acronym will come up a lot of times. Uh, January of next year, so two thousand and twenty-six now, um, the first meeting of that month, we'd like to go over frequently flooded areas and critical aquifer recharge areas. So their guidance, their best available science, and time for discussion on those issues. Those are grouped together because they're not as complex sometimes to regulate, or there might not be as many major changes or choices to make regarding those. Um, they're a little more straightforward than some of the things like particularly wetlands and, um, fish and wildlife habitat. The region areas, not to say that they aren't important. Uh, and then January twenty-first, there's no presentation, and that is time for code writing for staff. Uh, the first meeting in February is time to look at the draft code for geologic hazard areas. That's the first critical area we'll be looking at kind of in this timeline. Um, talk about the major points of that draft code and get feedback on it, um, to continue developing. And then the second meeting in February will do the same thing for frequently flooded areas and critical aquifer recharge areas. So any outcomes from those discussions that we have early on can go into the code writing, and then we'll bring that, those code outcomes back to you. March, uh, is when we can get started getting to wetlands. Um, so March fourth will be focused exclusively on wetlands with the guidance, science, and discussion for those. Uh, and then for the second meeting in March, we want to give time to acknowledge the overlap between wetlands and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, because those are some of the ones that overlap the most, um, and talk specifically about hydrologic and like water-oriented fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Uh, if you remember from the kind of primer presentation, we have a, a lot of dryland, um, conservation areas, things like mostly associated with prairie habitats and our Oregon white oaks. And then we have a lot of hydrologic and water-oriented, uh, habitat conservation areas, and those are our streams and lakes and, uh, things near shorelines. They aren't the shoreline. Shorelines is separate, but, um, things like that. So we'll, we'll have a discussion about that, um, at the second meeting in March. And then we'll talk about those dryland, um, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas in April. And so again, that's primarily, uh, prairies and things related to prairie species and Oregon white oaks, um, for the most part. Uh, April fifteenth, um, I know that both the SMP and HCP are of like pretty high importance in this conversation. There is like interaction between the CIO and a lot of people who are coming in and getting critical areas permits are also getting one or both of those two. So, um, we'll have time to talk a little about how they're integrated, what's covered by what, um, and that kind of thing. Yeah.
Andy, do you expect that we'll have an approved SMP by the time we try to integrate this in?
No.
Okay. So are we gonna integrate our current SMP? Or are we just not gonna try to do any integration until we get a?
Working on that and what, what our options are going to be. We would like to see the best and the greatest CIO information be able to be used in the SMP. Um, but we need to have those conversations with the college.
It feels like it'd be a waste to try to integrate our current SMP if we got a new one coming.
Well, and, um, correct me.
A combination of waste and nightmare.
If I'm, if I'm wrong about this, correct me, but I think that the direction of the integration and the kind of literal sense is more so that the SMP adopts. Critical areas. Regulations in it and not necessarily that the critical areas ordinance adopts the SMP.
There's a. SMP is intended to have a bright line between the areas that are regulated by the SMP and the areas that are outside of SMP jurisdiction. And are regulated by the critical areas ordinance. And as we all know, these occur in the same plane. But we would, we would wanna mirror that in the CAO as well and have it very clear where the CAO applies, where the SMP applies and.
And that, I think we have the capacity to do, even if we don't have the, the newer version of the SMP fully adopted yet, that we can.
The definitions of where it applies, that, that won't be changing or should not.
That was a pretty clear no by April.
Yeah, uh, because we have not received formal feedback or informal feedback yet from the state on the disposition of the. SMP draft. So I'm not anticipating re-engaging with ecology staff on the SMP until um, through the new year.
We'll get the feedback from them. We'll have to figure out if we can incorporate it and then.
So once you get feedback, you're still expecting six more months of work before.
It's, we hope not. We hope not, but we, we honest, we don't know the, the, the scope of all of it. Yet, so uh, but you know, I'll be here as. In these proceedings. So as I know something, I'm happy to share those updates with all of you.
Who at Ecology is in charge of the SMP review?
Uh, Tess Brandon is still the, the primary person who's in charge of it, um, in addition to all Tess Brandon. In addition to all her other duties, but as far as who's overseeing, um, you know, her work or the SMP, SMPs in general, I'm not sure.
Those come through the Shorelands Environmental Assistance Program, but they are reviewed in the regional offices. So it would be the Southwest Regional Office of the Department of Ecology that would oversee the staff that are doing that work.
It's been mentioned, I think maybe at our last meeting about five different things that kind of were the majority of what the CAO is all about, or maybe it was. What geological hazards or something was that wetlands, steep slopes, critical aquifer recharge and frequently flooded areas. What, what's the fifth one on my?
And the fish and wildlife habitat.
Just a big category.
A big name for a big category. Yeah, and that's why we've got.
What's the name for that group?
Those are the critical areas. So there are five critical areas. There are geologic hazards. Critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, wetlands and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. First meeting in May, we're not planning a presentation. That's to give time for code development. And then second meeting in May, um, some time to look at permit processes and that'll be discussion. And like probably some preliminary suggestions for how we're anticipating going about uh, amending the permit processes. I know that's a big point of interest for pretty much everybody. And then also some time to review the code uh, for fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and wetlands. And then June through July is when we anticipate, um, doing the sort of final process of. You know, presenting the final code drafts, having a public hearing and getting a recommendation. And with this, including the public hearing, I wanted to note too, um, we're also working on a public engagement plan. So while this planning commission process is really central to public engagement, for those who are interested in continuing to engage, like we will have a plan coming out. That includes opportunities that are not just at planning commission as well. Uh, we know that's important and we. Plan to do a variety of different strategies depending on who we're targeting or what kind of feedback they're looking for. That's it.
I got a question. And maybe this is for manager day. Are we expecting to work on any other docket items between now and the end of the docket year? And other than CAO, and then when are we, are we still expecting the new docket year to start? When will they adopt new one in February?
Um, I'm, this is my first docket season, so I don't know the docket process that well. Would it be closer to like April?
Yeah, um, so we're not planning on bringing any other docket items. From the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five docket to you before the end of the year. Uh, the exception to that is potentially UGA codes and uh, joint plans for scoping conversation. But that'll just be dependent on other work priorities. As far as the docket for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, that'll follow the same timeline as we have in past years. So, uh, you can expect to have a new docket by probably the March to April timeframe.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with Claire, not your fault, but I think it's funny that we talk about we're gonna have some say in finalizing the schedule. I'm pretty sure if we were to ask the question. Can we change the last date, the end date? The answer is no. Pretty sure if we were to say, can we skip any of these sections? The answer is no. So I don't know how we can, I see something about prioritization. Is there something you're looking for us in terms of that we could potentially feel like something's more important than something else?
So, so some of the feedback, I would say that we're looking for might be something like if there's a topic on here that you feel. Needs more than one meeting to discuss, we can take that back and, and work on the schedule to include that, like. We've kind of tried to anticipate how things are gonna work out, but um, if you.
And I appreciate this. I really appreciate this outline. Like this is way better to be prepared for what to expect.
Or if there's concepts that you want to make sure we hit on in any of these broad categories, we wanna know that too. Like we keep hearing wildlife corridors. So we're gonna be talking about that when we get to that fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, if there are any like major topics, I think the wildlife cover, quarters conversation that we're already hearing is a really good example, like. That's not something I think that is necessarily in those baseline state requirements as far as like how fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas are defined. But it is something that we can work with and that we can look and see what other jurisdictions have done and how it fits into the code. And so if that's something that we wanna spend time on, um, we can work that into, maybe it's still under the same dates. That um, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas are coming up on here. But maybe we just know that that's a priority item for that conversation and that's a note we can make as well.
When we were doing SMP, we had a really great workbook. On state guidance. And when we get state guidance again on November nineteenth, is there gonna be a similar workbook to that or is it? I don't know if CAO is gonna be as complicated as SMP.
Talking about the SMP handbook that Ecology produced. I think we're gonna be looking for any allegories that exist out there as it relates to critical areas. So we certainly be looking like, we'll be looking at Commerce's webpage, I think primarily, but also DFW publishes a lot of uh, critical area specific type.
But that's not ungenerated, period.
So the state does have those and, and they'll be available to you. I think if you're, if you wanna get curious ahead of time. There's some linked in the resources from the first presentation that we did. But yeah, what uh, Ecology has manuals on wetlands and how they're managed. Uh, WDFW uh, has a really like robust manual on um, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Particularly riparian areas, which is the areas around streams. So there's, there's these big bundles of state guidance like that handbooks. And Commerce also has just a general critical areas guidebook, which might be a really good starting point. If you're looking for resources, I think that's linked in the, the PowerPoint and the staff report from. September seventeenth. That, that's a great starting point. If you just wanna know what is the commerce baseline for critical areas. What's the baseline guidance that they've compiled and the things they're pointing to? That's, that's a great start.
To this Blessings comment earlier about um, looking for ways to. Not just your habitat, but store species populations. I met a guy at a, at a conference for the Savery Institute one time who had bought a ranch in Colorado. That had sage grouse habitat. And he bought it from a rancher who found it hard to ranch because of all the rules and regulations around preserving the habitat. And yet he designed a grazing plan with the outcome that he was looking for was to increase the number of sage grouse on his property. And was really successful at it and it was. It, it, it was a, a good financial strategy for his ranch. He got money from conservation groups and whatnot. Um, and I know that here locally, is it Tracking Y Ranch? That does, uh, the guy that does um, grazing on various properties around the area. And he has told me about um, increasing habitat for um, the Oregon spotted frog. By applied grazing at certain times of the year in certain places and whatnot. So that is something that I'd be really interested in is um, how uh, ranchers can. Can manage to increase habitat and maybe make their operations more profitable if there are ways to incentivize that.
Yeah, I think um, there's a point there where it may, we might not touch as much specifically on that because we have. A kind of separate dedicated procedures and rules for agriculture and critical areas. But I know one of the goals um, that we are already hoping to accomplish is to mostly through the permitting process. Make voluntary conservation work easier. Um, so. It could be that kind of thing or even like people who want to do things like remove non-native species. Sometimes run into permitting issues with that or other conservation work. If it involves things like ground disturbance, which it can. Is currently challenging to do permitting. Um, there's not a lot of like leeway for conservation work. So that is a goal that we have as far as the permitting process goes.
If we did wanna go forward with some of the ideas that we've heard in public comment and in other areas, especially Ms. Norton in this particular case. On metrics for monitoring how this goes, how would we develop those metrics? Cause I know like some of our other programs, like the metrics we use for no net loss and SMP are really just proxies. They're not anything we measure directly. How would we develop metrics for the effectiveness of CAO?
Yeah, I don't wanna get too far out in front of our headlights, but um, one of the things we're actually working on right now internally is. Putting together a grant proposal to develop a kind of. All program wide uh, net loss tracking and a framework to get to net gain. So it's actually really tricky, cause um, and I think this speaks a little bit to what Loretta was talking about earlier. The no net loss is really all we can require at a permit counter. Cause if you try and go above that, you're gonna run into regulatory takings. You're gonna violate Nolan Dolan. Um, so you can't really do that at a permit counter scale. The state has been trying to figure out how to get to like a net gain positive environmental um, and ecosystem function. And they have spun their wheels for going on like seven years now. Nobody's been able to kind of figure out how to do it. So we are gonna put together a grant proposal to come up, um, hopefully with like a basically credit debit mitigation. Ledger and then figure out how you actually can like as a community, like move past that. No net loss, which you really probably aren't achieving in most cases. Like it's really hard to get.
I believe that. I just, I, I, the idea of moving towards a net gain, I, I understand why we would want to do that, but. Without. How, how do we measure, measuring is really the tough part. I mean, saying we put it in a rain garden, so we got net game, that doesn't really measure.
So, one of the way, one of the ways that I think it's kind of analogous and we talked about it a little bit is the way the voluntary stewardship program works. That basically pulls agriculture out of the normal critical areas um, system. And you, the, like the conservation district works to measure the net loss. At a watershed scale. And uh, in some cases, they'll do that with something like uh, high resolution change detection. So they'll use satellite imagery over time to figure out whether or not you're losing canopy and wetlands. So that's one way that it's kind of been done and it kinda, kinda works. The challenges, the resources, that relies on putting new resources into that basin to make up for the, basically the debit. That you get from um, from the agricultural practices. So the conservation district will work on putting new BMPs in that system so that over, on the whole, you get. You get net law, no net loss. But there are other ways, either putting more resources in or. Honestly, really creative uh, management programs.
If, if we wanted to use a metric other than the amount of tree canopy or the size of our wetlands. Could we develop other metrics that we do wanna measure to try to? That be a conversation we can have during CAO or do we need to do that somewhere else?
I would probably, I think it, one of the things that we're thinking about is it's gonna be hard if you take one. Like uh, regulatory program and try and measure that no net loss, net gain. So how do you do it across all of them? How do we do it across all of our comp plan objectives, our shoreline master program objectives and. Critical areas objectives, all of our pre-canopy objectives, all of our habitat, our habitat conservation plan objectives. So looking across the whole of the system um, would be the way that we'd wanna do it. So to answer the question, it'd probably be.
Outside of CAO.
On the back of CAO. If we could get done by June, we might have time to talk about.
Future updates as well.
Commissioner Kaiser, how's your handle?
Thanks. Um, I'm really interested in the geologic hazard conversation and I'm really excited that you're gonna have DNR come in. And talk about this new generation of LiDAR that they're deploying, which is absolutely fascinating, has huge implications for us. I'm hoping that not only do they show the resources, but that we actually get to have a look. At some of, some Thurston County areas and the work they've done. It'd be really cool if we could, you know, look at different types of. Areas and have them analyze with us uh, exactly what the data is showing in terms of. Hazards and historical pattern of the hazards and that would be really useful rather than just saying, here's the suite of tools, go for it. You know, it'd be really much more useful to have them actually take us on a deeper dive into the Young Prairie. Or um, the area around Boston Harbor or that just would be, I think, really valuable, this work. Yeah, we can keep that in mind when we invite them.
I've had our in-house geotechnical engineer take me on that kind of a tour and it is fascinating.
WTFW released a midterm report last year on their net ecological game and it's a big nothing marker.
I know.
It's basically, we would build off of no net loss, but no one's doing the no net loss stuff, so yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a, there is a functional framework to get there. Um, it's hard for. Have to get their heads around it. But it's sound like there's grant dollars there.
Commissioner.
There, how, lots of comments have been about endangered species. I noticed there's not that acronym in any of our scheduling. Is it because it kind of fits in with everything? Or is there any particular part where we'll really focus on things for endangered species?
There's two things for protected species in the critical areas ordinance. The official wildlife habitat conservation areas, those are intended to protect um, important endangered or threatened species. And they're associated, they, they go above and beyond just kind of that baseline federal endangered, because we have the ability to designate species of local importance.
Just gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, uh, and then the other thing would be uh, for some of our highest risk species at the federal level is our HCP. Which is outside of this. Um, but that's part of the reason that a lot of the time folks who are getting critical areas permits also get HCP permits. Because there's overlap in those areas habitats. Um, but like if we're talking pocket gopher, spotted frog, butterfly. Then those are our HCP species and they have their own kind of separate regulatory framework that they operate under. But fish, especially salmonids, Oregon white oaks, um, prairies and the like plant life associated with prairies. Those are all gonna be under fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask about. Um, so are there, is, is that the, all of the ones of local interest?
No, there's a long list and I couldn't say them all. No, there's a long list that I couldn't say I'm all, because there's a bunch of like Latin names for plants and stuff, but it is, there's a table in the code. Um, if you're poking around and you go to the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas chapter. Uh, there are tables that talk about the specific species and markers that indicate those areas.
Chapter twenty-four dot twenty-five.
And how does it work with things like? I mean, the thing that's iconic that people at the state level keep talking about is our resident orcas. And orcas are not remotely endangered on a global basis. They're very endangered in Sailor Sea. Um, and we keep seeing struggles that can't even give birth without uh, some of them living. Um, and it's pretty obvious that salmon is absolutely critical to their survival. And uh, salmon is another iconic species here. And yet, both orca and salmon, obviously very little to do with on Thurston County territory. But the water is right off of this, I mean.
The, the federal government designates critical habitat for endangered species. And when it comes to southern resident killer whale and um, which are a um, endangered population. Um, and uh, some of the Salmoans, they have not designated critical habitat um, in the way you'd expect them to. Um, so they haven't, in the case of like southern resident killer whale, recognized the critical habitat for Chinook. As critical to the survival of southern resident killer whale.
Yeah.
Um, as well as um, actually designating critical habitat for um, some of the summer species.
And are you all familiar with the burgeoning theory in ecosystem preservation of keystone species? So, I mean, these things, I, I'm not a scientist, but these things have to be part of that. Do, are we aware of any other potential keystone species that do have even partial territory within Thurston County? That could affect our overall ecosystem? Mountain lions, I'll think of something else.
Not sure off the top of my head, but um, those kind of considerations will go into the priority habitat and species. Information that we get, that we use from the Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, that's the.
The wildlife.
The main state resource that influences those. Um, and as far as like how the jurisdiction over um, some of those species that go into, out into the sound. Where Thurston County isn't, um, I think one of the big connections, especially with orcas and salmon, is our ability to protect. The areas around streams and rivers, um, because those are very important to the life cycle of the salmon. Um, and so when we do things like establish riparian buffers, which are the distance you have to stay away from streams and rivers. Uh, we do things like maintain low water temperatures and maintain better water quality, which both have positive outcomes for salmon. And therefore orcas. So there's still, it's an interconnected region, um, and so some of the work that we do upstream. Has impacts all the way out into the sound, for sure.
And looking back through the current critical areas ordinance, that's one reason that um, the type S streams, the biggest streams in the county. Like the biggest rivers were given large buffers back in twenty twelve. Was in recognition of the need to protect that habitat and that was carried over in the SMP for that, for that same reason. So some of those things are there, but you know, they're gonna be revisited in areas outside of SMP through this process.
Thank you for that. I'm fully with the public commenter. They said, let's put a man on the moon. I mean, let's save the Chinook.
Couple thoughts on the frequently flooded areas. Can we make sure that we have a very good definition of floodplains? Because we're coming up on season and every year I hear somebody complain that. Their property flooded however many times in the last ten years and it's in the hundred-year floodplain. But everything under a hundred-year floodplain is also in the hundred-year floodplain. So we need something that says, cause, and maybe something specifically designates. The definition of one hundred-year floodplain is a one percent chance of flooding every year. Not one flood per hundred years.
That's already in the definition, but people, yeah.
And like, you know, I know they don't exist, but there's a five-year floodplain, a ten-year, you know, every, every year from one to ninety-nine. Is included in that hundred-year floodplain. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that if you flood in the hundred-year floodplain, that you're, you only have a one percent chance this year.
I forgot my flood for this hundred years. Yeah, and I think that too speaks to the need and something that we'll be developing and working on alongside this. Especially because we have a really cool uh, education and outreach team working with us on this, is to develop materials to help people with that as well. Um, sometimes those code definitions don't like reach everybody in a way that helps them understand their own property and, and. The environment that they're part of with that property. So I think creating really accessible tools for, for helping people understand this is gonna be a part of the process as well.
This might be tangential to this, but it's an area that I have a lot of concern about. Is there an opportunity here then that we can not depend wholly on FEMA for floodway and floodplain maps? Right now, it seems like we depend wholly on FEMA. We don't do any development outside of that.
That's a good question. Um, I, the resources I'm aware of are from FEMA and the definitions and resources I see other jurisdictions use are from. Like if every each, if each of these critical areas kind of has its agency, that is the one for floodplanes. Um, now, we do have flood hazard areas currently designated that I don't believe are part of FEMA definitions. And that would be high groundwater hazard areas. So there is uh, and flood of record. Um, so. Yes, but I think the baseline guidance, which is gonna be our starting point for all of it. Doesn't necessarily include those things. If there is a desire from the public or from this commission. To investigate options beyond that baseline agency guidance from FEMA, then we can do that.
I, I think where one of my big concerns comes in is that right now, we, whenever FEMA comes out with a new map. We just automatically adopt it uh, with no public process or. It, it doesn't even go to the board. We just automatically adopt the new FEMA flood map when it comes in. And I'm very uncomfortable with that. I think that public process has to happen before there are any land use changes that apply to the county.
Uh, you were just earlier mentioning something about folks who might be trying to remove non-native species. First off, I'm just curious. I don't know that much about it, but is, I've, I've heard there are basically two that are of the worst or most concern. The Himalayan blackberry and the Scotch broom. But is there far more than that that are considered invasive and problematic? And are they labeled as noxious weeds or is that a totally different thing? And um, is it a problem here? I just returned from a trip to Hawaii and Hawaii has a massive problem with non-native species. I mean, it's wiping everything out of everything, from their birds to their plants, to their trees, to their.
There's a, yeah, there's a, there's a whole list. There are multiple lists. There's a state list, there's a county list. Um, we've also run into it where people show up at the permit counter and like an example, I think we had not too long ago. When somebody wanted to remove English ivy from their shoreline area and they were gonna need, they were gonna need. Pretty arduous permitting hoops.
Or it was vague, exactly what they needed.
Yeah, it was also, it was also vague because it was, were we using the state's list? Were we using the county's list to define noxious weeds? So, yes, we do have noxious weeds, invasive species here and they are a problem.
Is it two or three of them? Is it twenty of them? Is it two hundred of them?
It's a list of around twenty, I think.
The Thurston County Noxious Weed List, Noxious Weed Board uh, has a list on their website. Of the ones that Thurston County has recognized. Uh, there's about twenty of them on there. With two that you've mentioned being at the top of the list. Uh, but most areas uh, have at least fifty percent of those noxious weeds in them.
I looked at a wetland report today that had probably seven or eight different. Invasive species.
And the other one, I mean, and you'll find a lot of the noxious weeds along county roads and the ditches and stuff all over the county. You just can't control it. The other thing is, uh, Eric and I have talked about this and all the LMDs have talked about this. It's not just upland plants, it's aquatic submerged vegetation. We are getting a lot of non-native invasive species coming in from all over the world. Into our lakes. Every lake has one or two. They just identified in Long Lake, uh.
Eurasian milkfoal and Brazilian eladilla.
Right, and we've got curly pond weed that we've had for sixteen years that we've been trying to get rid of. Uh, Phyllis knows this. Uh, having said on the uh, PIFMAC, we brought a thing to them a couple of years ago. Uh, to get a new chemical authorized and we're getting a handle on it, Phyllis. Uh, but there, i- it's a problem through all the lakes and streams.
Capital Lake has now.
Oh, Capital Lake's terrible. Yeah.
Capital Swamp.
But it's not just the lakes, it's the streams and rivers. Uh, knotweed is a big one. Uh, all up and down uh, the river, uh, the Deschutes River, the Chehalis.
And this is a theme that we've, we've heard from a whole bunch of different areas, is how do we make sure that these critical areas don't become a burden? In a way that keeps people from doing the right thing. So we've, I think I've mentioned this before, we've talked to folks at WDFW who are trying to manage prairies. And they can't restore the wet prairie because, from, and um, basically protect it from dug for encroachment because of the critical areas. So we've got streams that should function as these prairie streams that are, have been encroached on by.
And I know green crabs are an issue at the coast and even in other places, but are they an issue here at all?
Not our department.
There's uh, mussels and snails and other things that are in Capital Lake as well. So there's a lot of different things that are causing problems around the uh.
Yeah, I don't think the green crabs have made it this far down.
Yeah, not yet.
Not if, but when.
Well, black bears are my favorite thing on earth, but I don't love the vines.
Oh, Himalayan is terrible. It's everywhere.
Just try digging it out.
Goats will eat them.
Need goats.
The only thing that's been working for me is goats.
Figure out how to do, let's say, the shoreline service for pigs to. They're like the ghosts can't do.
The ghosts leave them down to the ground.
Is that, is that all under a voluntary stewardship plan?
It depends on if they're a.
That, I think that was actually part of my answer to the question. I was like, well, this is sustained livestock keeping or are they visiting?
Right.
The pigs are visiting, it's different.
Alright, next on, if that, if that's it for everybody now feeling good about that, okay. Uh, next number five on our agenda is um, work session number one. Development code, introductions to Title Twenty. With uh, Maya Tople.
Thank you Chair. Hello Planning Commission. Good evening. Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Thurston County Community Planning. Tonight, I will be talking about a new docket project that is proposed for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven docket. And it's what we are referring to as the Title Twenty Modernization Project. So it's not docketed yet, but uh, we are beginning to scope it in hopes of hitting the ground running in twenty twenty-six. After the comp plan is complete. And just to start upfront, we're not doing a substantive update as part of this docket item. This is more of an organizational update and uh, just improving how our code flows within Title Twenty. So a little bit of background, Title Twenty is the section of code in Thurston County that governs our rural zoning ordinance. It was first adopted in nineteen eighty, so quite a long time ago. And it had its first and largest set of updates in the nineteen nineties when the Growth Management Act was passed. Since then, we've had fragmented updates, so it's really a piecemeal um, version that we have now. And some of those chapters, the code from the nineties is still what's applying today. And the organization is basically just been built upon since its original adoption. So uh, for our zoning specifically, it's um. You know, you're just adding to the pot over and over again over the years. Uh, it's not like the critical areas ordinance that has been repealed and replaced over time. Uh, so, so we're, we're dealing with a very fragmented code right now. Um, just to go over what the area that it covers is specific.
Maya, you had slides for this, yeah?
I meant, is it not sharing? I'm so sorry.
So I just wanted to like intervene before you got too far along.
Thank you so much. There we go. Now it's, hopefully it's showing on your end. Um. Okay, great. Just in time. So this is an image that shows um, where Title Twenty applies in the county. So the blue area is what we're really talking about when we talk about this section of code. That's our rural unincorporated county. Um, and then the white areas are covered either by city codes. Or uh, separate titles, titles twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, the exception to that is in the south of Thurston County, the UGAs for Grand Mound. For Tenino, for Bukota, for Rainier and for Yelm are all covered by Title Twenty regulations. And most of the zoning in those areas is still one to five, uh, with the exception of Grand Mound. So those are the regulations that are applying right now there and they come from Title Twenty. Uh, how is Title Twenty used currently? So when we say rural zoning ordinance, this is the section of code that governs land uses and how they can occur on properties. It directs to things like densities, the types of uses that acco- can occur on specific properties. What the setbacks are and um, also things like some operational standards. So there are some noise and lighting requirements, there are parking requirements, landscaping requirements. And permit processes are also in this code. They work alongside several other titles in Thurston County code, so we have um, you know, over twenty titles. And in those other titles are things like our building code, which aligns with both the state and international building code. We have a title that focuses on uh, environmental regulations around shorelines. Uh, forest conversion practices and ag. And then there are other codes like the subdivision code, the critical areas code and impact fees and then code enforcement. This update. Sorry, go ahead.
This is Kevin. Uh. Question about building stuff, uh, you mentioned parking and loading and landscaping. Is there anything we can say or have any rules or help with, any rules related to, you know, energy efficiency or anything along those lines?
Yeah, we, I mean, we are adopting energy efficiency standards as part of the comp plan, so that, that's added to this list. Um, but it, it's relatively narrow in scope in terms of energy within the building. That typically falls under other titles that exist in the Thurston County code, like our building code and our fire code. Um, so it would not be directly and specifically addressed through this update. But there may be some organizational updates to the climate-related code changes that the planning commission just moved forward it. And will be included as part of the comp plan update at the end of the year.
Thank you.
And I, I apologize, I'll pause after the slides because I think there might be a delay on my end from my internet. So I do want to make sure that I get your questions so that you have an opportunity to ask them. Um, so yeah, the, the update will focus on Title Twenty. It'll really just be a reorganization of that section. We won't be diving into other things like the building code and uh, the environment code at this time. But maybe down the road, there will be opportunities for updates to some of those other sections. So our challenges um, right now, these are all of the things on the left side of the slide. That would exist in Title Twenty and do exist in Title Twenty right now. Um, and so you, you have a variety of things. They're generally repeated by the zoning district. So every zoning district kind of has a separate section for each one of these things. Um, there are some exceptions on this list, like uh, special uses have their own chapter and variances have their own chapter. But generally speaking, a lot of the information is repeated several times throughout the code. And that can make it uh, very challenging to navigate, which is uh, why you see a maze on the right. So the challenges that current planners face right now with Title Twenty is it's duplicative. Uh, things are just repeated throughout that title for every zoning district in a lot of cases. And administrative processes are also. And administrative processes are also repeated, it's not always consistent. Um, the language, language as it's written is complex, it's not written with plain talk in mind, it's not intended to be. Uh, easily read by our community members. Um, so you know, a lot of this was drafted when GMA first came out and it still has that language and tone to it. There are some internal inconsistencies. Uh, one example is the permit review process, which the planning commission processed earlier this year. Um, administrative procedures just, which was just one topic in that code touched several, seven separate sections of code within. Uh, Title twenty and some other titles. And each of them needed to be updated in order to have our timelines consistent with new state law. And they weren't all consistent across our code in Thurston County. So the more duplication there is, the more room there is for error in the future when planners go in and have to make code updates. Whether it's for compliance with state law or just uh, to mirror new policies that are coming through. There are complicated processes. Um, again, this is really a duplication thing that is challenging. And then I believe you talked about RU E recently, that's one of the challenging processes which would be addressed with CAO. But there are things like that that exist within Title twenty as well. And there are a lot of missing graphics tables and references. So um, we, we have like a whole chapter of graphics that are missing out of Title twenty. The tables in some places are cut off or information is just misdisplayed. So there are a lot of corrections that could be done there to make it a little bit more easier to navigate and. Um, easier for our public to read and our planners to apply. So our opportunities for the Title twenty modernization project is that, uh, again, this is a redesign. And an improvement of structure, it's not intended to be substantive updates. So when this does move through, through the planning commission next year, it will be presented to you in. With two succinct buckets, there will be the organizational update and the changes that are happening on that side. Um, it'll probably be, you know, a structure that comes to you at first and then the details that come to you later. And then the, any substantive updates will be called out separately with specific memos, so you can review that information. Um, you know, with, with more detail. Uh, substantive updates, as far as we have right now, there are not a lot of other docketed code updates on the current docket. The exception to that is uh, there is a docketed item for review of cannabis regulations. And that would touch Title twenty, so that is potentially a substantive update that would be. Kind of folded into this process and reviewed concurrently, but again, called out separately for the planning commission to dive into. Um, the, the catch to that is if any new code projects come up as part of docketing. Or if there are any other priorities that the planning commission wants to address, like potentially. Um, having climate go forward as part of docketing or some of those implementation items. Uh, other, other opportunities as part of this project are just improving transparency, making our code language more. Um, easily read by our community members and also easily applied by our planners. Uh, right now they're looking through several sections of code and sometimes it can be challenging to navigate. And then the goal would be to phase future integrations of other sections of code. So CAO will still be its own standalone section, but in other counties that do this approach of a. Um, unified development code, ultimately that gets integrated within your. Kind of your zoning, it becomes all one bucket. Our environment regulations would ultimately get linked in and so then planners are only going to one place to find everything they need. Um, that could be five or ten years out before we ever get to integrations like that. But uh, we want to set up the structure so that there are opportunities to integrate those types of things down the road.
My question pastor has a question.
Uh, two questions actually, first one about cannabis, uh, were you referring to retail or were you referring to growing?
Uh, I can't recall the specifics of the docket item, but I believe it has uh, requested changes around both. And the one thing I remember about that docket item was specifically on how cannabis is referred to in the code. And whether or not certain cannabis structures are treated as agricultural structures.
If I remember correctly, this was my very first meeting as a planning commissioner almost two years ago. Um, cannabis is regulated in a separate part of the, the code. And that was an accommodation to when the law changed, but. Uh, it means that it has its own set of agricultural rules, it has its own exclusions that prevent it from agritourism, it has a bunch of. Weird restrictions that only apply to it because we put it up in a separate thing, so if I remember incorrectly, the idea is to, how do we take that separate code and. Integrate it into its logical places within parts of the other titles.
That's correct, and there are some requests to how it would be applied in the rural community. Um, just on the basis of what I know, what I can remember from the request, requested code change. That would be probably a pretty high lift for staff to process that code amendment. Mostly because the stakeholder engagement around cannabis in our rural community would be. Would be, we'd have an active community probably for something like that. Anytime we change where that type of a use can occur. We're gonna get a lot of folks wanting to participate in that process. So it would require a good amount of staff effort to process that one, it is still on the docket this year. Um, and, and I believe in the past, the planning commission made a recommendation to keep that on the docket, so.
Well, I hope you find some way to chill out about it. Second question I had to do if we go back one slide. What, I see nonconforming lots and special uses and we just talked about that a little bit in the last meeting. Can you tell us what it means here, what? Yeah, what does it mean here in this?
So nonconforming lots are typically lots that have a use that either predates. Usually it predates the existing zoning or predates the regulations that were applied. So it may be a use that is not necessarily consistent with or allowed under the current regulations. Um, to be quite upfront with you, I have not looked in great detail what other jurisdictions, how they handle those nonconforming sections. In kind of universal codes. Uh, but that would be something that I would investigate further as we move forward in this process. Special uses is um, are uses that require a special use permit, which is a little bit higher level of permitting process. Than a typical, you know, permitted by right use, uh, those have a public outreach component. We're not proposing to change the uses as part of this, so the uses are gonna stay in the category that they're in. But the way it would be integrated and organized in the code would be laid out a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Uh, so, yes, I think I covered everything on that slide. So to go over the approach of this pro- project and a little high level update on timeline. I don't have a schedule as wonderful as Claire's, that was excellent work that she presented to you guys tonight. Um, but the first step will be research and kickoff, uh, I have been lightly looking at what other jurisdictions do. Um, but we will uh, work mostly with current planning first to identify. Issues and uh, challenges with our current code. And then the stakeholder outreach will move to an external component, so working with our community members. And also developers who regularly use Title twenty and apply for permits. Just to make sure that the structure, you know, it might, might make sense to me, but I want to make sure it makes sense to everybody else who has to apply it and use it. Um, from there, we'll develop a structure and then plug things in. Any areas that are inconsistent and need some sort of a determination, uh, will, will. Clearly identify those so that when that moves through the planning commission, those are called out specifically. And then finally, we'll go through the legislative review process, so that'll be your planning commission and your board review process. Um, I hope to pick this up, as I mentioned, when the comp plan really gets towards the end. Uh, so probably by the end of this year, early next year, I'll start working on the stakeholder outreach component of this. And then this will hopefully come through the planning commission and the board uh, later in twenty twenty six. So the next couple of slides are examples and they're very text heavy, it's not intended for you to read. Um, but I will just provide a summary, our current structure right now, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Every zoning district has the standards laid out and it's repeated throughout every single zoning district. There are different standards for every zoning district, but you have to go across several chapters if you're looking for something. Um, and then your landscape is separate, your uh, special uses are separate. So you're looking through several chapters within Title twenty when you currently get an application in and you need to apply the code. Um, that's the left side of this table. The proposed structure would be uh, similar to what other jurisdictions who have a uh, unified development code apply. And the method and approach for that is that the uses are generally in one chapter. Um, it breaks down every type of use, so you're uh, permitted by right uses, your special uses, your conditional uses. Your accessory uses are all there in the same table. And then your standards are in the next chapter and again, it's broken down by zoning district. So it's all the information would be the same, but you'd really be going to one chapter to figure it out and find that information. And then things like signs, administration and definitions, those would all still remain separate chapters. But we would make sure that the information is compiled so that folks aren't having to go across several sections in order to find what they need. There are a couple of examples that I provided in the memo, if you get really curious, the first one and. Um, my personal favorite, not really applicable in their terms of what, what kind of zoning and uses they have. But Clark County, Nevada recently adopted a unified development code and similar to Thurston County, they. They actually did it all at once and they had a private consultant do this work, but they. Um, repealed their existing zoning and several other titles and then they adopted everything all in once. And what you get is you still have the details of each zoning district. So at the top, top left, you'll see residential, single family twenty and then broken down by standards and the purpose of that district. All of that information still exists, but the beauty of a unified code is you get tables that have all of the. Um, development regulations and uses in one place. So it's easier for your community members to access and it's easier for your planners to access. Uh, and, and the two examples here are your um, standards for development and also your summary of uses as screen clips.
So if I'm following that table on the previous one, that bottom right table, the, the columns are the different zonings. And essentially like affordable housing is whatever C is, I'm guessing, uh.
Conditional?
It's permitted.
So, so A is typically, it's gonna be. Um, P would be permitted, C would be permitted with conditions, S is a special use permit. And then A is an accessory use and then T is a temporary use. And then uh, with, within that same chapter, you're gonna have all of the. Procedural things or like the requirements for each of those types of permit processes, so it's really all in one place. And you know, sometimes we get a property owner who. Knows what type of use they want and we have the zoning, we're looking in the zoning chapter if it's allowed. And we're also looking in the special use chapter if it's allowed and maybe the things are inconsistent, so. So having it all in one place really minimizes the inconsistencies that you can have.
I could see how that'd be convenient, I want to build a childcare home. It's permitted in three, it's a special use and everything else.
Remember that one though is euphemistically called alternative.
Alternative. Alternative uh, housing.
Less restrictive.
Less restrictive, alternative housing, but which was for sex offenders, but we weren't allowed to say for sex offenders.
About to prohibit it.
Yeah, yes, so that would probably be in the use chart. Um, so another local example, uh, Snohomish County is an example. And that was brought up for critical areas tonight and it sounds like they even have some structural improvements that we can make as part of that update. But they already have a unified development code for their zoning as well. And same thing, the big thing is you have these. Beautiful large tables that have all of your standards and all of your uses in them. And so that's the intent and the direction of the restructuring for this project.
Maya, on these uh, jurisdictions that, that adopted a unified development code. I'm gonna guess that the unified development code is a product from different consultants. Different private organizations of some sort that then sell that or license it to the jurisdictions. Do we have any idea what these jurisdictions are paying for that?
Yeah, it, it's, so I would not say it's. Private and it's pitched to the jurisdiction, like this is not something our private community is coming to us and telling us to do. This is, you know, a project that has been identified internally as something that will improve. How our current planners are able to process our code. Um, I, I don't know for sure if Snohomish County used a consultant, but I'm pretty sure that Clark County, Nevada did. And depending on the scale of work that you're giving to the consultant, like if you're doing all of your. If you're integrating everything all at once, your critical areas, your environment, your road standards. That could be a pretty hefty bill and I don't have an estimate for how much that would cost. But I would estimate that would be a workload probably equivalent to the last periodic update. You know, you're thinking like five hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars for a project like that, that redo, redoes your whole code. If you are focusing on one section of code like what we're doing, uh, that does probably bring the price point down pretty substantially. Um, but I, again, I don't have a good estimate, I haven't been, I have asked and I have not received any information on what. It, what government agencies are spending on this kind of work.
Well, I'm just getting at if, you know, the A six upgrade is millions of dollars or. You know, every time we do Oracle stabilization for six or seven figures or something like that. The unified development code is probably a canned product being offered by somebody that.
I, I don't think a ton of, I don't think these are frequent enough that people have this packaged and you can like buy one off the shelf. And they'll plug your code into it.
Deloitte already has it and is ready to go.
I'm not, I'm not sure that Deloitte does, but.
No, and it's a lot of manual labor, so I mean, it will be me and I will be going through the code with a fine tooth. Fine tooth comb, so. Uh, no, they're, they're not really templated for sale. I mean, there, there's kind of a general structure that you can follow, which is shown in the two examples that I provided. But as far as like taking everything and filling it out, that doesn't really exist, so.
And we would operate and maintain it ourselves. Maya's new nickname is Little Deloitte.
That's part of the reason we're only doing Title twenty right now is because it, it is a lot of work, even if though it's just a reorganization. It's gonna require a lot of attention to detail, so.
Save your templates.
Yes.
What is your question here? What is uh, on the left side here, you've got this type of use and a bunch of different, you know, A, starting with the letter A. What is that? Like, are we gonna be doing something? Are we having any say about types of uses?
We will be using the uses that already exist in the county code, so. Um. There's no plan to create new uses uh, as part of this project. But if that would be a priority of the commission, that's something we could certainly bring forward as part of the package during the docketing and scoping. Project. Um. I, I would want to consult with current planning if there are uses that are not already covered or aren't clear. That would be kind of where I would go with that first.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Maya, but having the code kind of cleaned up and solved, solved it like this. If we did want to update it in the future, it would be much simpler to do.
Yes, that's correct, so the goal, the goal of this project is really to improve, you know, not only now and the usability. But future code updates and how we can integrate that more easily. So uh, my last slide is just open discussion for the planning commission. So just to recap, not a substantive update aside from other docketed code items. Or um, if the planning commission wants to identify priorities that we could bring forward as part of scoping, like climate implementation. And uh, it's intended to reduce redundancies and make. And uh, it's intended to reduce redundancies and make the code clear. So um, questions, you don't need to answer tonight, but um certainly do think about it. What are the commission's priorities? And are you aware of any existing challenges that you've heard of from your constituencies on the Thurston County code? Lastly, and I meant to say this at the beginning of the presentation, but it's been a while, so I was a little nervous. Natalie is here from the current planning team in the audience. And uh, she will be attending these meetings as much as possible with me because she provides a little bit more insight to the code, so.
Commissioner Pesnier.
No, I defer to Commissioner Casino.
One of the concerns that I hear quite a bit, and we've touched this briefly before, but at least on the building and development side, it feels like our code is really complex when it really should just be complicated. And if it was complicated, developing a decision matrix would be very easy. Even if it had, you know, a hundred different decisions, decisions that you had to make, people could work through that. I don't know how we can get there, but it'd be great if we could see at the end of this, a decision matrix that somebody could pick up, you know, uh, at the permit counter and then go through and know exactly what he's gonna be lined up against. I've told this story before that when I was doing a place in Pierce County, I sent an email to one person in their building development center. And seventy-two hours later, they spit me out a thirteen-page report of all the things that I did, and if I do, did those, they would give me a permit. And that was fantastic. As somebody that's trying to develop, that kind of, that, that kind of knowing what's in front of you is worth a ton, not knowing, you know, if you don't know for sure that this report's gonna be accepted, or you're gonna need that report, or you're gonna have all these other difficulties, having something lined out if, ahead of time would be fantastic.
My guess is that's not a decision tree, that's a Natalie that knows how to answer the questions behind the scenes.
I would just add to that comment that coming, thinking with through a economic development agency lens, that if our neighboring jurisdictions are able to provide those things and we are not.
Yeah.
We might be losing opportunities to grow jobs in our county.
Now, which was. Looking at where to invest. Situation was just a single-family home. But you know, if, if in seven, and maybe, maybe we can't do it in seventy-two hours. But just the whole idea that I get a thirteen-page report back that is step-by-step, if I do all these things, I will get a permit. That's fantastic.
Yeah, and I think the goal is to have the code framed in a way where people could, we could send a section of code and it is really that easy of a list to read because, because quite frankly, right now, if you're just a landowner and you're looking through your zoning, that's one thing. But then you have to go look through the procedures and the special use permit process and all these separate sections, sections of chapters, and you don't know how they're integrated. And even, you know, I just processed my first permit and it, it was hard to navigate that. So I can't imagine someone without that expertise trying to do that. I think the goal is to streamline a lot of that so that it is easier for the public to do that. And then, you know, like we talked about, the adaptive monitoring with the CAO, paper sheets that go out to the public, that would be on the backend of the project, right? We already have plans to do a lot of improvement around our um communications and applications and all sorts of things next year, hopefully. Uh, but we could certainly add that on as part of the project that the intent is, will implement it too. And will make um procedural documents that support, you know, what we're doing with the code.
Commissioner Pesnier. I agree with Commissioner Casino, uh where I work in software programming, we call that spaghetti code. Um, my question has to do with priorities and uh, I would like to vote for nominate for lowest priority, anything having to do with standards. Landscaping setbacks, site design. Remember that time we spent time debating about use of river rocks in Grand Mound?
We did, that was.
Let's not do that again. Uh, time we talked about paint colors, let's not do that. The time we talk about sign designs, let's not do that. Um, so that's my vote, lowest priority.
Can you put it in the code? Just don't make it ugly.
Yeah.
It can ugly, I don't care.
I'd second that motion.
And by the way, on that front, I do not love what Olympia is doing to the East Side Food Co-op currently, using those exact same standards. To disallow their expansion.
Commissioner Bummer. Um, I'd just like to say, having just gone through the comprehensive plan thing, um, a word of caution against assistive technologies when plain-talking things. Um, I know that's one of the objectives here. This is ultimately code. It doesn't necessarily have to be the most comprehensible, but it does need to be accurate, so. I don't think that plain talk review is gonna be on the list for this project, I would assume. Uh, it was in the slides about um, I'm a simplifying language, and I was just. If that's where we're going. Clear language, but I don't think we're gonna use that anyway.
Just. It will not be the same generative AI, it will be a manual plain talking, so.
Okay.
In that vein, though, I am curious because AI is getting better and different forms of AI are getting better. Um, would staff remotely consider attempting? I mean, we've just heard it described, you tried to figure it out, you tried to figure it out, Maya tried to figure it out, going through all the existing structure, and it's not easy. Would we, would anyone in staff consider trying to have AI do it, go through it and summarize it and give a recommendation? And if they can get anything remotely useful out of that, then that might be worth sharing with customers.
Yeah, we could discuss internally exploring that, um, having used generative AI. Like personally, I don't know that it's there yet for all the nuanced detail that exists in our code. Yeah.
It is, it is confidently wrong. And more than often than not, which makes it very hard to apply in code enforcement type situations, so. I think the goal should be that AI could understand our code and apply it. Well, I mean, what we've established is that humans don't always fully understand it, so we're putting a lot of hopes on the technology at that point.
They're gonna tell us where to live anyways.
Move somewhere sunnier.
Any other questions?
I don't see any here.
Yeah, I got a couple things. I know that this is outside the scope of what you're talking about, but probably, but you said the county was looking at adding other developer additions or updates to this. Um, I would vote number one, be the right to farm section. Because right now Thurston County just has a right to farm. It doesn't even have, which is in state law, the right to reclaim uh costs if you're found to not be a nuisance. So if somebody takes, if somebody files a nuisance complaint and it's found that you were not in violation, that cost is still on you. And there's other thing, you know, if, and there's, and in the state law, there's more about if it's found to be malicious or whatever the other words they use were.
Apprecious or something, yeah.
And you're asking for um, like a closer look to how that is handled at the county level?
Well, uh, at the very minimum, adding that language to, but also looking at, I don't know if it's any better or if there's anything else in it, but I know Skagit County has a very different and it's right to manage resources rather than just right to farm, because it includes, right to farm includes your forestry. Um, and the other thing I'd say is I'm glad you're trying to simplify this because you would not believe the number of times that I've had people tell me that I don't understand county code. So, including one time that I had to get a addition, that I had to hire somebody to tell somebody else that I was right. Apparently, I, I was, in this specific example, I was told that Thurston, number one, that Thurston County did not allow clustering. There's always clustering, just not deserting bonuses anymore.
Yeah.
I was also told that the innovative techniques applied to long-term ag. And the reason that I was wrong was because Thurston County code is just too complicated and you'd understand it.
Yeah, I, I can, I can understand why people would say that. It's, it's beast as it is, so.
Do you have a comment or a question?
Oh, I was just seconding uh, what uh was just said. I, I strongly support uh, doing something about the right to farm.
Maya, do you feel like that fits well in a Title twenty update?
So I think it would raise to the level of potentially a substantive update, but right to farm is a chapter within Title twenty, so we could add that to the docket as, you know, I, I, it, it, I don't think that would be a heavy lift, especially if it's looking at Skagit and evaluating state law. We can pull language directly in from there, so um I can do more research on that before docketing occurs.
Well, I would, I would third that as well.
All in favor? There, there has to be at least something we can do to clarify existing language without it happening to be an undocumented thing.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
In the case of one of my names as well.
Probably would be.
Those two obviously are. So we're unanimous on that, I believe. I think we've got a unanimous or near-unanimous show of thumbs on that.
Thumbs up.
I mean, I think at the very least, just adding the language in state law.
Yeah.
It would be, it's very similar in legal concept to slap and anti-slap. There you go, yep, strategic lawsuits against public participation. Yeah.
Added it to my list.
Thank you. Uh, and thanks for bringing it up, Commissioner Nelson. Um, if there are no more comments from the commissioners, we're gonna go to Agenda Item Six, Staff Update from Eric.
I don't have any big staff updates at this point.
Okay, terrific. Agenda Item Seven, Calendar with Agenda Items uh, for attendance. Purposes, let's see, we have our next meeting on November fifth. There is a chance that I will be out of town um, in my heart cities that evening.
I should be here, so it shouldn't be an issue.
What is the election?
Fourth. Yeah.
You'll be out of town the fifth.
I, well, I might be visiting the site of an industrial symbiosis project in the port of Pasco. Um, so more to come on that. Uh, and then November nineteenth. This, and it really no topics, I smell cancellation.
It's like everyone doesn't wanna be.
And exactly is the world's experience.
I believe CAO will be on the fifteenth. I think our agenda is, or the nineteenth, I think our agenda is wrong with that.
Yeah, we have the overview of state guidance and best available science now that we have a complete draft schedule.
And that is the date of the Bullet Ports Association New Commissioner Seminar. I'll also be out of town for, but I will try and zoom in for that one, if you can.
I don't know, but the one thirteen-four.
Ooh, ouch.
I may be out on the uh fifth. Um, I might still be out doing birthday stuff at that point, but I'll, yeah, I'll let you guys know.
I'll miss both meetings in November. I'll be out of the country.
What was that? Commissioner Casino is making that, that must be nice face.
Like a grand vacation.
Yeah, I'll be la, be in South America.
Nice, terrible.
Warm, dry.
Perfect. Uh, anything else in the order?
I have a question. Um, I don't know if, if we can do this, if we have time to do this, but I think there might be some value in doing this that um, the planning commission generally doesn't have a big hand in docketing or making a recommendation for docketing. And I think that, that maybe we should, that um, you know, obviously, sometimes we've recommended certain things, make it to the docket, but the docket on the whole, if we had a recommendation on that, I think would be valuable for the commission to produce and for the board to hear.
Are you, are you suggesting a permissive model where we have the ability to docket things and the commissioners?
Never have the ability to docket it, but I think that if we were able to tell the board we value being worked on would be useful for the board to formulate their idea, like it should be. You know?
That makes sense.
We have uh, a discussion of what that might look like um, potentially on November nineteenth?
Yeah.
And obviously, a lot of the things that are docketed are, you know, we have s- staff items that are docketed. We have other departmental items that are docketed, and we have some public items that are docketed. And you know, we wouldn't have a whole lot of say on a lot of that kind of stuff, but I think we could at least come up with a prioritization on how we see things.
I totally support that.
I wonder if there are other counties or jurisdictions that could be good comparisons? They're bringing up in that nineteenth?
There could be. I'll, I'll have a couple conversations internally. We might be able to make our own rules.
Yeah, if, this isn't, we're not inventing the wheel here.
No, and like all recommendations from the planning commission, the board can do whatever they want with it. But I think hearing from us what we think is important would be useful.
And one thing I will actually, I'll, I've been, I've been telling some other folks, and I think it's worth signaling here, is uh, with the, the state of the county budget, one of the things that our team is looking to do is to uh, pull in, pull down as many grant dollars as possible. And that means from just like a staff resources standpoint, we'll be obligated to work on those grant projects. So we might have less capacity to do docketed items.
I think us knowing what you're getting paid for would help inform us on what we think you should run after.
So I think um, yeah, and I think if, if we can have a good conversation about where everybody's priorities are, it could help us with work planning.
And the new group of five commissioners that's been in place for a while, they haven't taken us to dinner yet. And with the budget issues, maybe they shouldn't take us to dinner, but they should at least talk to us.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if our, if our docket recommendation would be sent to them as a report or we would have some sort of more formal conversation with them or show up at their work plan or show up during their work session, but I, I think it's worth at least considering.
When we're done with this topic, I have other good of the order.
I'm done with it.
Good order. Two different good of the order ones, uh. Um, Mima Mounds, pretty cool, pretty interesting. Uh, there was just a TV show, very brief, like ten minutes or fifteen minutes, called uh, By Mossback Northwest, uh, Newburger. Um, pretty great show and pretty informative. And basically, the summary is like, nobody knows what caused them. Like they've had a lot of different theories put forward, and none of them have remote proof behind them or evidence confirming them. Um, to this day, nobody knows what they, where they come from, what caused them. In the native language, that might, just Mima Mounds itself means new thing. So even to the native tribes, they were like surprised and didn't know what it was. Um, so it's interesting, worth watching. It's on PBS or on YouTube. Um, second is, I have heard that our current county budget shortfall has at least a good proportion to do with the GMA. And the fact that the legislature, and some will know this because Gary Edwards used to talk about this, uh, that the legislature had two rounds planned and envisioned for the GMA. One to create the GMA and a second round to fund it, because they knew it would create shortfalls in funding. And they've never gotten around to that. Um, and I'm just curious if anyone else knows anything about that and how that works and could share with the planning commission, the impact of the GMA to our funding. And our budget shortfall.
I've got nothing to say in an open meeting.
That sounds like it might be a good.
And the only thing I can, I don't know about numbers, but the only thing I can say about our budget for our, the state's deal is oftentimes we have spent a lot of time working on stuff that's mandated by Growth Management Act, and so whatever staff time goes into that is part of. working on stuff that's mandated by Growth Management Act. And so whatever staff time goes into that is part of that.
And when I think about the resources that we put into the GMA driven versus the county's budget writ large, I wouldn't say it's substantial. There is a structural issue with the way that um, the county basically, like when we think about like UGAs. Um, so that we will, the county helps develop those and then the cities annex them. And the revenue goes to the cities in the future once it's built up. So if I were to attribute any of the deficit and the um, the current budget situation to the GMA, it would be that structure where the valuable revenue generating properties are incorporated.
That makes a lot of sense.
Well, and two, on that topic, through a lot of it, there's a lot of things that we can't do in rural county for those revenue generating things, because they're just prohibited in rural county.
Legislature has never created an unfunded mandate before.
I think you could actually do something around revenue sharing at the state level. Get tapered five-year whatever revenue share with annexation through something. Or um, the way I think about it is that one of the primary obstacles is like land and resource stewardship. Like we're the holders of this land, the like un, currently unannexed those UGAs and also the, all of the resource lands. Um, and those aren't large revenue generators, but they provide large benefit to folks in incorporated areas. That would be.
It's also true. We get stuck with UGAs that the cities are never going to annex, because there's no money to be made there. And so we get burdened with them essentially.
I heard some good news on the front that Lacey is coming around and seeing the light and they're gonna annex all of Martin Way Corridor, including Tanglewild.
I hear the same thing too. I don't know how it's going.
I'll believe when I see it.
Do you know anything?
I will trust and verify.
Uh, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Under two hours.